Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. We'll officially call this meeting into order. And we will move to pledge allegiance to the flag. And it's to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
In looking at in the audience, I don't see anyone other than some new attorneys, which Mr. Hewitt's going to introduce in just a minute. Is anyone not familiar with our paperwork at the back of the room that you can gather, follow the meeting? Okay. All right. Number four is a consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion we approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a agenda item. Based on our Friday meeting, I'd like to add the discussion of possible action to approve the engagement agreement and to finalize the hiring of law offices of G. Grady Richardson, Jr., as Holden Beach Town Attorney.
Second? Where on the agenda would you like to add it, sir?
Six, right after six, so 6A.
All right. Do you approve of that, Mr. Fletcher?
I do.
6A. Everyone understand? Pardon me?
Okay. Do I have also one to add? Do I have to vote on that one first?
Let's go ahead and resolve this one. Any discussion on that? Everybody understand the request on adding 6A? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Provo say no. Shenamus and Gee, sir?
I'd like to add item 6B, discussion and possible action on information flow to the Audit Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Provo say no. So as the agenda has been amended, are we ready to move forward to number five? Consideration of approval of minutes. The chair will consider A, B, C, D, and E. Is your motion we approve all of those?
So moved.
All right. Mr. Freer, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve all of the minutes in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Shenamously approved. Number six, public comments on any agenda items. Right, yes, ma'am. Procedures, raise your hand, be recognized, go to the microphone and...
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if I need this or not. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just hold on. I'm Rhonda Dixon, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Inlet and Beach Protection Board, who are all behind me except for Dean, but Tim, Mike, and Vicki and myself. And the, from our inception, the Inlet and Beach Protection Board, about July of last year, one of our first tasks was to do a long-range plan for the oceanfront and inlets and beach management. And commissioners passed us with this. And we started working on it almost immediately. For the next six months, we pretty much did our own research. We looked at like practices of other islands and what other people were doing. We put together an outline, and each section had a very distinct purpose. In February of this year, we started working with ATM, with Fran and Kathy Forester, and they have worked with us for about six months on putting this plan together. We're very proud of the plan. It was presented to the Board of Commissioners at the last Board of Commissioners meeting in September. And we believe that it is solid, it is fluid, it is, has all the projects that the town has been looking at for vision and with management, and it also has proposals in there for new projects that we can be looking at. And so we would like to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they adopt this oceanfront and inlet management plan tonight. It's on the agenda, item nine, and that they adopt this plan tonight at the meeting. Did I miss something? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to any item pertaining to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move forward to 6A.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept and approve the engagement agreement from the law offices of G. Grady Richardson, Jr., as the Holden Beach Town Attorney.
Second? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Provo say no. Shenamus, 6B. Mr. Fletcher?
I move that the Board of Commissioners direct the town manager and the finance officer to provide to the Audit Committee all information and documentation that the Audit Committee Chair determines necessary to effectively evaluate the town's system of internal control and the performance of the external auditor.
Second it?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Everybody understand the motion? Discussion?
I'd like a specific list. What are you expecting you're going to get? You're just saying all. Could you please outline in more detail types of documents that you're assuming you don't have access to, that you need access to?
Well, I would give an example of this last meeting on Friday when we had an Audit Committee meeting, and I, as the Chair of the Audit Committee, asked the town manager to provide four pieces of information to the board so that I thought, I could, they could do what I thought was their job. The first was something that's already on the website. That's the cash basis budget to actuals that we get monthly, which the board, which the Audit Committee has looked at in each of its quarterly meetings. Otherwise, the town manager refused, and we talked on the phone beforehand, but I put it on the agenda, sub to his approval, and he did not, would not provide information. One, a copy to the Audit Committee of the draft financial statements that have been submitted to the town and the internal control assessment. Two, any information related to any changes in the system of internal control for the town, including those in response to the RSM internal control assessment. And three, any documentation confirming that the town was maintaining the accounting records using the accrual system of accounting as per generally accepted government accounting standards. On the first, he declared he did not want them to see the draft. You might recall that the Audit Committee was bypassed completely when the town manager submitted the final 2017 and 2018 audit reports to the auditor prior to their being reviewed by the Audit Committee. On the second item, the town manager declared the Board of Commissioners had directed him to bring internal control changes directly to the board, bypassing the Audit Committee. I do not recall giving such direction to the town manager, but it can be. On the final request, the town manager said he was unable to provide the requested documentation as he was not ready to do that. I viewed each of those sets of information as necessary for the Audit Committee to be able to do its job. Its job is to evaluate the internal control systems and to evaluate the audit process and the external auditor. If they can't get any information about that, it's impossible to do that job. And to me, that's a critical job.
I will remind you that on the internal control information, that is supposed to come to the Board of Commissioners before the board reviews it and decides what help they need from the Audit Committee. This has been made clear since April. So specifically, on the internal control information, what has been done in response to the RSM project, RSM report, and what is expected to be done in future, that information is to come to the Board of Commissioners first. Then it will come to the Audit Committee with specific asks from the Board of Commissioners for what help we need. And that is documented in several Board of Commissioner meetings, both open meetings and closed sessions.
That documentation was specifically regarding the RSM report, as I believe. I simply ask for an update on any changes in internal control in the company without regard to the RSM report.
Which would be changes because of the RSM report?
Possibly.
I would say definitely.
Is there a comment? Discussion?
Yeah. We're a little bit quick on putting this on the agenda. I should have said this prior. This is just another instance where not only hasn't the community been able to see what this particular item is, we haven't been able to see what this particular item is. I don't know how we can be expected to have a discussion, an intelligent discussion, when we don't even know what the item on the agenda is going to be until we sit down here. So I object to the idea that this is placed on the agenda. I know it's there, but this just happens too often, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't be handling the business in this manner.
I appreciate your comments, Mike. However, this only happened Friday of this last week at the normal...
I understand, John, but this is Tuesday. If you wanted to put this, the least you could have done, if you wanted to make this motion, was to send me a copy of the intended, in the intended agenda addition.
But I believe I'm restricted from sending it out to everybody.
We don't even, well, we don't have one. We don't even have a copy. How are we supposed to know what we're going to discuss here? We don't even have a copy. I understand that it happened Friday, and I understand...
I can give you a copy now if you need it, but I just read...
It's missing the point.
To me, to me, it's a basic concept. We have an Audit Committee, and we've given it a job. If we don't allow it to get the information it needs to do the job, then they can't do the job, period. And if they can't get information on how the internal controls are working and what they are, then you can't assess that. And if you can't be involved in the audit, then you can't make a judgment as the audit is doing a good job. Just not, forget the details of these three things that happened on Friday. If we don't open the channels of communications, the audit, that the town manager can give information to the Audit Committee, then they can't do their job.
And I'll agree with you. And we've had this discussion about the Chairman of the Audit Committee being the conduit for information and getting information and processing and helping the board to understand what's going on. And the last time we had our auditors here, it was disclosed that you had three conversations with the auditors, and you never sent any of that information to us. You never discussed it with us. So the idea that this is going to help all of us somehow, I question, because when you had the ability to do that, to keep us apprised of what was going on, you failed to do it. And I asked you specifically if I missed the memo, and your answer was no.
No, I didn't do a memo. In each of those cases, I asked the town manager to bring the board up to date on what was going on with the audit.
You didn't, you didn't do it on any of them. Not each of them, any of them. And the specific ask, when you wanted to be involved, was that you would be the conduit to the board. And it never happened.
I can only ask as well, I don't know how much in advance you actually asked the town manager for, finance officer for information, but I do know you didn't publish an agenda until late in the afternoon, Thursday afternoon, which actually hit the waves at 7:48 in the evening for a 1:00 PM meeting the next day. So there is something to be said for, there has to be some advance notice for people to actually prepare themselves to provide information and even for people to be able to come to a meeting.
Any more discussion?
No.
Mr. Hewitt, did you have anything you wanted to...
I certainly do. The three items that Mr. Fletcher references that I refused to provide to him, those items were actually not on the agenda and were stricken from the draft agenda, which was developed after my conversation with him regarding the development of the agenda early on in the af, early on midday on Thursday. So the one item that was referred to as giving a status report on the agenda, I did speak to that. The other three items, I was not cognizant that they were even going to be on the agenda, and they, they did not appear, as Pat said, until almost eight o'clock the night before.
Any more discussion, Commissioners?
Number one, I think, you know, as I look back at this and I look at the previous audits that have been conducted, there's, there's obviously concerns, there's obviously issues. And from what I, from what I hear from the Audit Committee is that their concern is that there's a lack of communication flow of information. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Yes?
There is a member of the Audit Committee...
Out of order. Yeah? Yeah, let me finish.
Pardon me?
Please. I just want to finish.
Okay. The Chair is trying to keep control. Who's out of order?
Point of order is...
I still don't understand. Point of order?
Asking for...
Pat was going to point out that the member of the Audit Committee is in the audience.
Ah, okay. Well, so noted. You two have a point, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we're, you know, and I've expressed my, my concerns about, you know, audits and that we have, we have continuing issues. I don't know whether I want to call them issues. I can call them significant deficiencies, as would be stated in an audit. And what I'm looking for is, is to have timely communication. I'm looking to be provided with information so that this board can make the decision in a timely manner and be abreast of what's going on. I attended the meeting on Friday, and I was surprised, and I got to say it, I was surprised that the, that the agenda was not published previously. The agenda was late. You know, I have to agree with that. We need to find ways of working together. We need to find ways of resolving the significant deficiencies that have been noted in previous audits and resolve these problems and resolve them together. Without working together, this is not going to happen. So I employ all groups involved in this to either sit down with one another, resolve the issues. Thank you.
Any more comments? Discussion?
Yeah, I guess before, I only got a chance to hear what John said, but the request seems very broad to me, almost limitless. And I, I think it would be a mistake for us to vote to require the financial officer, the town manager, to be exposed to such open-ended requests. I think that there's not really, I can't see any pressing reason why we have to vote on this particular item. And I would say that since we didn't have a chance to review the proposal, that you redraft that proposal, tighten up the language, and put it on the agenda for the November meeting, and then we can have a full and open discussion on it with the knowledge of what we're going to be voting on.
We're in the middle of an audit, so it is time sensitive. So, and I don't understand why there'd be any restrictions, to be honest with you, from the Board of Commissioners Audit Committee to have information from the Finance Director.
I feel like I need to ask a question for clarity. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but what you're asking, Mr. Fletcher, is that the information that you would ask for would flow directly to you from the town manager, either I missed it or not hearing it, whatever. Whenever you communicate to the town manager what you want, do the other Commissioners have an opportunity to see what you've asked for and what's going back?
Could, but it's going not to me, it's going to the Audit Committee.
But what I'm trying to ask...
Yes. It could go to everybody. There's no reason not to. This is just, and it's only about internal control. It's what are the controls? How are you doing it? And everybody can see that, it can be public information.
Okay.
I don't think anything they're going to review would be secret.
But what I'm trying to ask is, whenever you communicate to the town manager that you want something, I'm trying to ask if you are allowing that communication, that request, to be copied to all the Commissioners.
Sure.
And as the information flows back, would be copied to all the Commissioners, so that everybody knows what's going on.
Absolutely.
That has not been the practice in the past.
Well, yeah, I don't see, I don't, Mr. Fletcher, Commissioner Fletcher is the Chair of the Audit Committee, so he's doing it on behalf of the Audit Committee.
So you, as a Commissioner, don't want to know what communications are between that committee and the town manager?
I don't know the communications between P and Z or the other committees when they're doing their business either.
Okay. I'm just trying to ask.
It's open meetings, everything's, I go to the meetings, I understand what's happening.
Well, I'm confused. The, Mr. Fletcher is referencing the internal control issues that were brought forward. I'm assuming that those are the issues that were brought forth in the RSM report. Mr. Freer, you're referencing the audit that's being, currently being conducted, and we're almost finished with, that's being performed by the external auditor, Rides and Associates. So the, the time is of the essence issue concerning the annual external audit. That's, is, is that two, or, there's two different things. I'm confused.
So, so Commissioner Fletcher, there's not just the RSM, there's other, there was two other requests that related to the annual audit? Is that correct?
Yes.
So two out of, two out of three, and, and the RSM is...
Well, the motion, I'm sorry to debate, and, but the motion was to provide documentation that the Chair determines necessary to effectively evaluate the town's system of internal control and the performance of the external auditor. At this point in time, we're already pregnant with the auditor. I don't see how we can get into evaluating their performance until the final document is prepared and you have that type of evaluation.
Does that complete motion, Mr. Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Here's what was handed to the clerk.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I heard other things about, I heard two other references.
And that's why this is a problem, because we, we bring up and we want to put things on the agenda without having them thoroughly thought through and composed and drafted in such a way that we would understand what we're actually trying to accomplish.
Mike, if it bothers you, I would agree that we would pass it on to the next meeting.
I don't think that it just bothers me. I think it should bother anybody.
But I'm not, I'm talking about you. Talk about your comments, and we're not talking to the audience. Mike?
I'm talking about everybody up here.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
You agree with that?
No.
You don't agree with it?
I think, I think, you know, if we've only talked about RSM, it's been almost a year, and, and we were promised a, a plan to address them this month, as a matter of fact, and we have nothing. So RSM, I think, is, is late.
And there's still two weeks left of this month.
No, this month's meeting is happening now.
But it's, the way it was written, and I know because I'm the person who had to describe it, it was October. It is still October.
So my motion holds.
You call for a question?
They call for a question.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Provo say no?
No.
No. John, could I, could I just ask you?
But he didn't agree.
Three to two, Madam Clerk. Without objection, Mike, you want to say something? We can't, we've got to move on to the agenda.
Great, great. I think it's obvious. I can't understand how the person who makes the motion agrees that the motion is not a good motion, but then votes for the motion anyway. I just don't think...
Okay. All right. Number seven. Mr. Evans? Make us smile, because we need some in here right now.
All right. I don't have any jokes. Let me start off by saying that it's broken. Doesn't work. I didn't do it.
Good start.
All right. Okay. All right, let me start off by saying that I want to talk about first, about the contract help we had from, from the Council of Government, right? And Wes, and Wes did a wonderful job. He actually came in, he basically took it over, he handled 90% of it, and it made it a pleasure to work with the Land Use Plan Committee. All of them worked very hard. And there was lots of debate, there was lots of, I want to say fever, I guess is a good word, between everyone, and I really liked the work that was done. Now, once they got finished, it basically fell to me, and it was supposed to go from there to the, to the planning board, and at that point, I put my voodoo on it and ruined everything. Okay? What I did was, the planning board asked for options, and I gave them three options that were directives, and the planning board followed through on one of those directives. Well, the planning board can only make recommendations, they can't make directives. And one of the options I gave them, which is one of the ones that they made, we were not capable of doing that. The contract didn't allow for it to be done that way, and it really needed to be approved at this level. They also chose another option that I gave them, which they actually set a public hearing for y'all, which they cannot do either. So outside of my terrible, terrible work, once it left the Land Use Plan, this is a great document. So I'm going to let Wes speak to it. Go ahead.
Board, thank you all. Mr. Mayor, thank you all for having me here this evening. I'm here to answer any questions you have about the procedure for getting this plan adopted. As Tim stated, it has been recommended for approval by the Land Use Plan Steering Committee in, I believe it was August, and then the Planning and Zoning Committee in September. The statutory process for this to be adopted requires a Division of Coastal Management review, agency review for completeness, and certification of their requirements. After that 75-day review period, it can then be adopted by the local governing board, in this case would be your Board of Commissioners, prior to a public hearing being held. From there, the plan is sent to, back to Division of Coastal Management for final certification. So it's a little bit of a cumbersome process. It's their process. I didn't come up with it. It's just how it occurs. And so I'd be happy to answer any particular questions about that. The last thing I'll add is, we, we have worked on this plan for a little over a year. We had a tremendous amount of public input. Over 900 responses were received for a survey that was given out. Approximately 90% of those were from property owners, so we feel very good about the public engagement that occurred as part of this plan. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you have. Thank you.
So I'm a little confused now, because the agenda item says discussion of possible approval of the Land Use Plan.
I think, I believe...
It's for submission.
Approval for submission to the Division of Coastal Management would be the, I believe...
For submission, okay.
Yes. And so...
So we are approving it to send, send it to...
That's right.
You're not actually adopting it, you know, it's, this is just a cursory stage that they make sure the statutory requirements are included in that plan. Once they have confirmed that, they'll, they'll contact us and say, you're good to proceed with local adoption. And then you can still change the plan at that point.
And if you change the plan, does it then have to go back to them for another review?
Not technically. So if you modify one of the 7B requirements, and I can provide the board that, then it would be my recommendation to send it back. But if you are modifying policies or, you know, matter of opinion items, which is not required to be sent back to DCA, you know, most of those items that are in the 7B guidelines are typically not something that necessitate comments or garner comments from a local government. They're elements of the plan that are, they're not the nitty-gritty policy pieces that are usually the points of contention. It can be sent back, though, you know, it's, it's up to you. Statutory, the only thing that's required is Division of Coastal Management completeness review, 30-day advance notice, public hearing, and then adoption by your governing board.
So, could we approve it and adopt it contention on those other two, the, 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 uh, going through without being a problem as far as meeting the seven B requirements?
If, if, if this board would like to, it's a pleasure of the board to move this through the process, I believe the motion would be just to recommend or just direct staff to submit it to Division of Coastal Management for their completeness review. Following that seventy-five day review period, it will then be scheduled for the clerk to be on your agenda for adoption.
Public hearing.
You gotta have the public hearing.
Yes, public hearing for adoption.
So, we have to have a public hearing first, then we vote on adoption?
That's right, you can, I mean, you could adopt it. It technically would, I suppose, it could, could apply as your land use plan, but it wouldn't count as your KAMA, KAMA land use plan. That requires having a, a, a public hearing that is laid out in, in state guidelines. So, there's some distinctions there that are a little bit different.
So, we already had a public hearing, and we have to have another public hearing?
No, 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 you, you had a public, it was termed a public hearing, but it was not officially advertised for it, for, for adoption at this point. The, the, the public hearing, you can have a public hearing at any particular meeting. I don't like calling, using the term "public hearing" unless you're referring to a statutory public hearing. You had a public comment session, per se. But it was not a public hearing in coordination with adoption at this point. And I know we're splitting hairs here.
And you can't adopt it, deny it, because you've got to send a public hearing first.
Does that public hearing have some specific things we have to do during that public hearing? Are there certain questions we have to?
There is, there is a requirement that the notification needs to have, and I have all that information, I can get that to the clerk. But it does require thirty days advance notice. But remember, all this, you know, you have to send it to Division of Coastal Management for their seventy-five day review period before you can even schedule a public hearing.
Okay. I'd like a moment. I'd first like to thank yourself. When did you first get involved with us with the land use plan?
A little over a year ago.
A little over a year ago?
Yes, sir.
So, this committee, uh, the steering committee, let me rephrase that. The steering committee's been working along with you on that. And we've had the, and I have to say, the expertise from town staff, too, who I highly respect, who I highly respect, and also the, all the individuals that are on the Planning and Zoning Board as well. The other group I'd like to thank pertaining to this is the nine hundred some odd people. Nine hundred at a, I think it was twenty-five hundred. Nine hundred in a survey is pretty darn good, getting responses and that, so, thanks to those folks as well. I know the nine hundred people aren't here, but the minutes will reflect that as well and such. So, if I understand the process correctly, that the, from this point forward, if we opt to do so, right, that it would go to the Division of Coastal Management for a seventy-five day review, okay? Then it comes back. Then there's a thirty-day advanced public hearing, we have to advise the public. And then, after that, then we could vote on the adoption of the land use plan?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
At the public comment session, I made the comment, or I made the statement that I thought that this document was a very good document. To me, it was ninety percent of, of being there. What I had sort of in my mind comparing the old document to where we were. I thought it was a great document, but there were some things that I would like to better understand, and I had a few things I thought could be done a little bit differently. And I actually requested, could not the Board of Commissioners meet with the steering committee and go through it with explanations and possibly do some revisions while it was fresh in everybody's mind. For some reason, that didn't get very good acceptance. I still contend that timeliness of doing a review and comments with the Board of Commissioners close to when it's being finished and not seventy-five or more days from now would be much more effective of a review. And I don't understand what the problem is with the Board of Commissioners having a sit-down with the committee and going through the things that there are some questions on. There's, there's still a lot of shells in there that I don't quite understand, and, you know, everybody keeps saying that we shall not shell. There are some things in there that I think aren't quite accurate from my understanding of things. And we're not talking about big things, but we are talking about some corrections, I think, that should be made. And again, it can wait, but the further away you get from actually finalizing a document, the wonkier people's memories may get about exactly why did we decide to say it that way? Or why did we precisely do it that way? And so, again, I'm, I'm simply requesting that before we send this forward, why can't the Board of Commissioners sit down with the Land Use Steering Committee and have our questions answered? And if we've got some suggestions, maybe they would actually be, you know, possibly incorporated. I'm gonna remind everybody that commissioners cannot actively participate in things like this. And the first time we actually get to make our own thoughts known, and we're citizens, too, is when these documents come to us. And it just seems to me that, at this stage, the commissioners are just being pushed back with, your opinion doesn't matter.
Well, thank you, Madam Commissioner. Certainly, your opinion doesn't matter, and I hope that is not the, the feeling that, that you're getting from me. If it is a pleasure of the board to have a joint workshop for this plan, prior to it being sent to Division of Coastal Management, certainly that is perfectly acceptable. You know, we're talking about typical procedures and typically the way things are handled, and typically they're handled in the way that, that I referred to. But by all means, if this board feels that, that a joint workshop or additional work is needed prior, prior to it even forward, then by all means, we should have a joint workshop and discuss this further.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of a joint workshop. When I look at the names on this document and the kind of people that I know that are on here, and their level of dedication and working on this for over a year, to include the expertise from the town, working with these committees, to include yourself as well, I'm ready to say, move it forward. I mean, don't, don't get me wrong, you know, you're, you're a consultant, you make a living being a consultant, happily, that is, and it cost the town a significant amount of money for this. But I think we need to put our faith and guidance into people in our town. When I look at all these names that are on here, and that, I've served on a parking committee, and I see there's a couple of people on here that also served and that. And myself personally, the, the parking committee, we did an outstanding job, not because I was on it, just because of the talent that we had on it. And I want to recognize this talent. What I don't want to do is create something that's going to prevent the talent that we have in this town from coming forward and going on to these committees. It's critical that we hear the voices of the people in this town. Thank you.
I, I guess I'll respond to that. I, I value all of the people who volunteer and are on committees. I've been on committees that submitted a plan to the Board of Commissioners where they didn't even ask me one question, just told me it was going to be referred to an engineer. So, I, I know how you feel when you feel as if your, your opinion hasn't been considered. What I do think here is, if, if you look at this plan, and believe me, I sat in on a good, a good number of the meetings. You guys did a great job, worked hard, I respect everything you did. But when you look at it, let me just get my glasses, because I'm getting old. It's a seventy-five page document, it has twenty-four tables, sixteen figures, and thirteen maps. That's a heck of a lot of information for us to say, you did everything exactly right. So, I have no problem with us saying, let this go forward for the seventy-five days. But I think that the group would pass up an opportunity to sit down with us and discuss whatever concerns we may have, because I may ask a question about how come this is in Section fourteen C? And you'll tell me, well, we discussed that for five minutes, and here's why, and I'll say, okay, it makes sense now. I didn't see that before. I don't see why you wouldn't take the opportunity to sit down with us and help us finalize this document rather than taking the, the idea that you're just gonna do what you want to do anyway. I, I don't think anybody here wants to do that. We want to get it right, we respect all the work you put into it. If I were in your shoes, I would take every opportunity to be involved in the final report when it's done. So, I, I would ask that, let, let it go forward, let's sit down, have a meeting, because we can't discuss it in twenty minutes at one of these meetings, but we can discuss it in two hours at, at another meeting. Whoever wants to come from your committee is more than welcome, and whoever doesn't want to come, that's, I think that's their loss. And, and that's, that's what I would suggest we do.
Yeah, I, I think we have a lot of things, time to do things after we send it off for review. If it comes back that it's legally okay, we will always have a chance to change it. And we can have a meeting, we can have a meeting with the people, with the committees, whenever we choose, whenever it's good, we've got time, and, and work through that and be ready to make changes a month from now, two months from now, whatever. But this way, at least, if we do it off now, approve it as it is now for submission, seventy-five days later, we should have the, the approval that everything's legal.
Seventy-five day minimum.
Minimum.
Unfortunately.
Oh, it's government.
Yes, sir.
It's faster than it used to be, because now it goes to staff, instead of to the commission.
But we'll have plenty of the.
As soon as it's ready, you all will be.
This board.
Yes.
Whoever this board is, consists of.
Yes, sir.
Yep. I agree, send, send it off, and, and again, we can, we've modified this land use plan before. We, and, and it's a guideline, we can, as, we or any board in the future can decide that we're, you know, for any reason, just any stated reason, we don't agree with the plan, here's why. So, rather than throw away a year's worth of effort, thirty thousand dollars' worth of consulting fees, I, I don't think it's worth adding our two cents.
I, I think you misunderstand, there was no discussion of throwing away anything. It was going through it, and if there were some things that could be strengthened or altered because there are some errors, to do it before it was sent off. I have no problem sending it off and doing the process while it's circulating through staff. But there has been absolutely no discussion, and you're misrepresenting what I say if you're implying that I'm saying trash the document. As I said, it's ninety percent plus the way there.
And, and there was public hearings, I participated in them. So, whatever you want to call them now, but you called them a public hearing at the time. I, I was here writing my comments on the board, I participated as a citizen in this effort.
Yes, sir, and, and I just wanted to make clear about the distinction about the one, one wire public hearing. We did have other public meetings, and I didn't intend to do that.
I, I guess, in, in response to Commissioner Freer.
And we, we had those meetings, the reason we had additional, did additional stuff was because, and the, and the committee did, too, was that staff reiterated your thoughts about the public being engaged as much as possible, and I kept reiterating that through the whole process and pushing more information after the public, I thought that was the most important thing. So, we did do that.
I would just like to comment in response to Commissioner Freer. Again, I guess I'll go into a little bit more detail. But I would like to know when the philosophy, when your philosophy changed, that you will accept any recommendation from any committee without comment? Because my recollection is, the committee that I was the chairman of, to look at the sewer, we had engineers on that committee, we had lawyers on that committee, we had people on that committee. We, and every time we wanted to do something, when we first got the task, it was just to look at the sewers. After we had our first meeting, we decided that there were more likely dangers to the sewer than just overflow of water, so we, we came back to ask you if we could increase the mandate. We did nothing without your approval. I gave you step-by-step reports on, on our progress, and then I gave you the final report. And when I stood at that lectern, not one person on this board at that time asked me one single question. They didn't accept it, they didn't even ask me a damn question. They just told me that they were going to send it to an engineer for a second review, and you were the person who told me that. So, I would like to know when the philosophy changed, so that now we're gonna just accept it, because good-meaning people, and I, and I respect them all, and they're good-meaning, and I like them all, and I know half of them, too. But when did we decide that now that's the criteria, that because we like the people, we're just gonna accept their report without any question at all?
You're mischaracterizing, because we like the people, that's not, that's not what was said.
This is what Joe said.
I said their expertise.
No, that's not what he said.
I recognized their expertise.
We did accept the sewer, and because we were spending close to two million dollars, we went to a, we wanted a second opinion. We didn't, we didn't reject that report at all.
Let, let me say, I didn't say you rejected it. If you had asked two questions, instead of just telling me you were sending it to the engineer, we would have saved the seven months and the fifty thousand dollars. Because if you had asked Tim standing there, once we started this work, if we had to bring it up to code, he would have told you yes.
I went to every single meeting, I knew, I was listening to every single word about that sewer.
I didn't say he didn't listen to it.
So, I didn't have to ask a question.
Well, you should have.
I listened to all of the debate and all of the questions asked during that, those months.
But Peter, whether you listened or you didn't, if you had asked two questions, instead of just saying it's going to the engineer, you would have had the answer that we had to raise it above the base flood elevation and that we had to bring it up to code. You didn't need to spend fifty thousand dollars in seven months.
Let's see if we can move on.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the 2019 Holden Beach Land Use Plan in the form recommended by the P and Z Board based upon the recommendation of the Standing Committee and the advice of the CFCG and the Towns Planning Directors.
That's an improper motion. We can't, we can't approve it.
We're approving it for submission, we're not approving, we're approving it go forward for, for submission for review.
Okay, oh, to submission to the, to the CFC, to the Division of Coastal Management.
For their review.
Submission, right.
Okay.
Yep.
The chair does not clearly understand the motion, would you state the motion?
To approve the submission of the 2019 Holden Beach Land Use Plan in a form recommended by the P and Z Board upon the recommendation of the Standing Committee and the advice of the CFCG and the Towns Planning Director, subject to the subsequent modifications that may be required to comply with NCAC seven B Land Use Plan Guidelines as specified, based upon review by the Division of Coastal Management.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fletcher, second it, all right, you still have a floor, motion maker. Do you want to support your motion or anything?
I think we've had enough discussion.
Can we just simplify it that we are, that the motion is to approve the submission of the proposed land use plan that has been provided by the Steering Committee and the P and Z Board to the Division of Coastal Management, just to make it simple?
Okay. Sorry.
Because otherwise, I need to see that whole thing that you just said with seven B, all that, it's, it's.
Let me see if I can help you. Are you trying to make a substitute motion?
I'm asking if it can be simplified, because otherwise, I, everything that he read, I kinda like to see in a paragraph.
I'll read it slower, so the clerk can read it back to us. I make a motion to approve the submission of the 2019 Holden Beach Land Use Plan in the form recommended by the P and Z Board, based on the recommendation of the Standing Committee and the advice of the CFCG and the Towns Planning Director. Subject only to subsequent modification that may be required to comply with the NCAC seven B Land Use Plan Guidelines, as specified, based upon review by the Division of Coastal Management.
Got it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have a question. Does that mean that if it comes back and you have a public hearing, that you couldn't modify it then? The way that that motion was stated?
Yeah, there is, I don't believe so, but I would merely make a motion to proceed with Division of Coastal Management review, and that would be the motion.
I agree.
Yeah.
Just submit it to the DCM and see what the DCM says. If they made changes, they're substantive under seven B, then you're gonna have to consider it all over again. You might have to do it for a second submission. Just submit it and get the ball rolling.
Mr. Freer?
I think that's what I said, based upon their...
If they send back...
Based upon their review of their, of modifications, subsequent to their modifications.
They're not gonna approve it. They're not gonna approve it. They don't approve it if it doesn't get sent through.
The DCM's gonna say, looks great. DCM's gonna say, looks great, but you need to tweak this. Or DCM's gonna say, you didn't hit the mark, well satisfying the substantive requirements. You need to go back and address those and resubmit. That's what's gonna happen. And then, let's say they don't have any substantive requirements to be changed, and it comes back, then you have your public hearing. This board can make additional revisions or amendments towards, so long as they're not substantive. If they're substantive, where they've got to have DCM approval, seven B, then you gotta submit it back to DCM for that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
I actually, I'm responding to our town attorney, who said, just make a simple motion to submit it. This is what you're recommending.
I'm recommending to go with Wes's suggestion of, take what you've got right now, in an effort to be efficient. Get that ball rolling. There's nothing to commit the town to anything other than sending it to DCM. You're not committed to whatever DCM says. You're not even committed to passing it when it comes back from DCM. You're committing to getting it going, and as I understood it tonight, while it's up there at DCM, maybe you have a workshop meeting to address some possible questions when it comes back from DCM. But you gotta find out what DCM's going to say before you can move to second base. Otherwise, you're just sitting at home plate, in the batter's box, not doing anything, except just swirling around.
Ms. Pat, that's the reason I was asking if you wanna make a substitute motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
It's our point of order here, substitute motion can come.
Yeah, I, that was sort of what I was suggesting, was to just have a very simple motion to submit the proposed land use plan that has been forwarded by the Steering Committee and approved by P and Z to the Division of Coastal Management, period. Just simple, straightforward, that's all we're doing.
Okay, I don't think we're going anywhere. I'm more, I'm more to ask for the vote.
So, to your point, I do not agree to have a workshop or anything. That's why I said, subject only to the modifications from the DCM. That's, that's why...
To be clear, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this board is committing to anything. I've heard suggestions of a workshop meeting while there's pending review at DCM. I'm not saying you should do that or not, that's, you'd ultimately decide. I'm suggesting that, just simply get it up to DCM. If y'all do nothing with it, for seventy-five days, on the seventy-sixth day it comes back in the mail, you'll see what DCM says, and at that point, at that point, you're gonna know whether or not you can put it on for public hearing, or whether Wes has gotta go back to the drawing board with Mr. Evans to amend things, to address what the DCM says are substantive issues. It may be non-substantive issues, that's a whole different call part. But you're not gonna know until you get it up to DCM and get DCM's feedback. And there's nothing here that's committing this town substantively to do anything with the land use plan, other than just sending it up to DCM for its review.
And that's correct. And I've done a lot of these plans, and I've never had the agency come back and say, we didn't include a seven B. I mean, they literally just go through a checkbox, that's, that's all they're doing. And then it comes back to you guys.
It's the third one that I've been involved with, with three different municipalities. And ultimately, somewhere down the line, there may be an amendment, but mostly, they go, they come back, and then they go through the regular process, and people realize that it's just basically a comprehensive plan. It's not set in stone.
Sure.
It's automatically subject to seven B, Commissioner Freer. It's automatically subject to that. I know your motion has that language in there.
Right.
It's necessarily included, basically by operation of DCM standards. I mean, they are going to ensure that your subject to seven B requirements is going to be addressed.
Peter, do we wanna consider the information from our attorney?
Sure.
Would you like me to give you some suggestive language?
Sure, go ahead. I'll listen.
I would suggest a motion, that the Board of Commissioners move to approve submitting the land use plan as proposed to the DCM for its review.
Period. That's all you gotta do. But you have a motion on the floor, sir, and you're second, and we've discussed it. Do you want to leave your motion on the floor?
No, I will, I will change my motion to what's suggested by the attorney.
Do you agree with that? Okay, so your motion now, sir, would be what the attorney just said?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with that? Everybody understand what the proposed now, what's in your motion? Are you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanna add, thank you again to the committee and the staff, and I believe the town is in good hands in selecting Craig Richardson and his firm. We've worked pretty closely with him every year, so I think he's gonna be very good.
All right, thanks to all of you that have gotten us to this point. Okay, we're on number eight, I believe. And Ms. Ferguson?
Good evening, everyone. Each year, we do an annual beach monitoring, with surveys and a report, and order the maintain and healthy beach and dune system, and to keep our engineered beach status. And Mr. Brandon Way from ATM is here to give us an overview of that report this evening.
Hello, Commissioners. As Christie just said, I'm a coastal engineer with Blight Technology Management. I've been working at Holden Beach for a few years now. And we've been just kind of going through this and then doing the annual monitoring report, and annual monitoring analysis. We're looking at volume change, shoreline change, we look at it all sorts of different ways. We look at the upper beach, we look at offshore, we look at nearshore. We're looking at shoreline change, mean high water shoreline, is kind of the one metric that everyone goes by. This has been occurring annually in Holden Beach since 2001. And as Christie mentioned, it's important for nourishment planning and also FEMA eligibility. And the FEMA eligibility has really come into play here the last few years, with Matthew and then with Michael and Florence, and now even with Dory. So, the, basically, this is, we're gonna go over the, just the 2018 hurricane season, that's, we're gonna go over for this, and this is what we're gonna include in the annual monitoring report. And basically, the two big ones were Florence and Michael. And everyone kind of, you can see here, where obviously, where Florence hit, you know, the top of the line, and was very slow, and was, you know, a major hurricane. And then Michael came up, you know, from the vault, and, but still, we were kind of on the bad side, and Michael did some damage as well. So, that was, you know, a bad season. For our volume analysis, we, it's basically, there's many different ways to kind of slice the cake. A lot of times, we're gonna do an upper beach volume analysis, and that's basically from the dune down to about negative five feet, about five feet deep. That's kind of the surf zone, and that's kind of what everyone thinks of as the beach. But in terms of like, the depth of closure, and that's kind of, and coastal ones near in term, that's basically like, how deep do you have to go for the sand to stop moving? And there's a lot of kind of different formula and equations to say, around here, FEMA actually made us for Michael and for Florence, they made us to go out to twenty feet deep. And they said, you need to go out to twenty feet deep, because, and sand does move out there. And, but a lot of times, in our previous ones, we'd use twelve feet deep. And, but even then, you can look at here, and this is beyond twenty feet, and these are surveys from April of last, April 2018 to April this year, there's movement even beyond twenty feet. So, it's kind of a difficult thing, but there's not a whole lot of movement, and obviously, we can get farther. So, there are all sorts of things going on here. But, you know, we are pleasantly surprised, actually, for this year, was that the beach out to kind of the depth of closure, we could almost account for most of the sand that we placed for the Central Reach project, that 1.3 million. The beach has been pretty stable, actually, when we go out to twenty feet. Now, when we looked at the five feet, from basically what we see, we did lose beach. And obviously, when you walk in the beach, you can see that. But it did go offshore, and then it came back, and actually, we saw some benefits, actually, on the shoals, on the Chilote Inlet and La Capo Folly Inlet. But we saw, you know, right after the storms, Michael and Florence came by, they got pretty hammered, the inlets. But we did see some recovery, and actually, some gain and some movement. And it's just, it was just really interesting, we actually had to go back, we went back, and we said, we made the survey or double check these numbers, because you need to double check these numbers, because, you know, this, this looks almost too good to be true. Well, we did see that, and so basically, the, out to negative twelve feet, I'm just gonna say that, the Central Reach did lose about 142,000 cubic yards, but we put about 1.3 million cubic yards out there a while, you know, in 2017. The entire beach area, there were some gains, and we saw some gains on Chilote Inlet and around the east end. And this is all kind of out in that stuff you don't see. It's out like ten to fifteen to twenty feet of water. And that's where we're seeing these gains, and that's why we kind of had to wrap our heads around and say, okay, the beach looks good. When you look down at the, from the dune out to the surf zone, the entire beach did lose some sand. And this is kind of just the volume change, where, well, here, this is erosion, and that's accretion, so we saw accretion, you know, near the inlets. And this is kind of the, where the Central Reach was, and that's still kind of, you know, we put a big slug of sand there, and it's going both ways. So, this is kind of a pretty standard reaction, when you put a big slug of sand there. But then you see some, over on the west end, where we're seeing some gains, which is, you know, that is what we'd expect. Mean high water line, the mean high water line, again, you're seeing some gains across the board, and that's kind of unusual. We did actually look at the toe of the dune, and the toe of the dune got hit pretty good. And especially on the west end, the toe of the dune, this is kind of beyond where the nourishment was. And you can see that the dunes got scarped out, got eroded pretty badly, especially at the west end. And we've been kind of keeping an eye on the west end, because it's always been kind of stable. And we look at all the, you know, all, you know, up to 600 feet of dune system on the west end. But there is, there's some erosion there, and this erosion has been occurring over the last few years. We're gonna keep an eye on it, but the dune system's still nice and wide and healthy on the west end. And we're expecting some more benefits from the Central Reach project to move that way. So, basically, for the last twenty years, the town of Holden Beach has been doing great in terms of where you'd be, in terms of background erosion, if you've never, all the nourishment activity that's been happening over the last twenty years, with the Deep Team, the Wilmington Harbor Deep Team, 2001, 2002, to the Upland Truck Halls that the town did 2007, 2008, and all the other management activity, and all the dune enhancement and everything. The beach is, on average, is about 100 feet wider now than it was 20 years ago. And that's the mean high water line. So, you know, basically, the town's management activities are keeping up with this background erosion. And then, just for, this is the last slide, our ongoing beach management activities, and the board has been, yes?
I just have a question.
Sure.
I can't get past the point of, we lost, did we lose only 140,000 cubic yards of sand in the Central Reach area? From, from, from the, from the quantity of sand that we, we put on there?
Yeah, it's, yeah, the same feedback.
I don't wanna get past that.
Yeah, no, I understand. So, basically, the background is, for FEMA, when we did our FEMA mitigation, we came up with 1.1 million cubic yards of sand lost.
Right, okay, okay.
And then, now, all of a sudden, we're looking at 20 feet, and we saw some recovery in that sand. That sand came back, and it was beyond 20 feet, and now it came back. And we do see that, that sand, that, and we do believe that kind of just the nourishment itself, kind of made that area in the deeper water a lot more dynamic, and there's just, there's just a lot more sand out there. And it's moving more than it used to prior to the Central Reach nourishment. So, then, yeah, that was, it was an interesting thing, it was, and that's why we made the surveyors go back and check their numbers.
I had a question.
My guys, like, hey, wait a second, you guys gotta check your numbers, and we're comparing things. The beach, there was some recovery. And that material out beyond 20 feet came back, and it's moving back on shore. But, you know, at the same time, it's, it's, you know, we looked at it really hard, we went over it many different times, to make sure that what we're seeing was actually, you know, measured, and it was.
So, is there a modification to our report to FEMA?
No.
Okay, so we're still at the...
You gotta remember, this is an annualized evaluation here. This is annualized.
And to, and our post-hurricane thing, wherever, 3,000 feet transects, and these transects are every 1,000 feet. So, there is more resolution there. But you can see, if, looking at the post-Michael and Florence surveys, you were seeing some changes out, you know, 20, 30 feet. Our surveyors basically go out about half mile, and they go about half mile to 20, 30 feet of water. And we're just seeing changes out there that, you know, usually we don't see. But then, you know, with Matthew, we started seeing some changes, and then we put all that sand out there, and now we are just seeing a lot more variability in that, in that deeper area.
So, we're, no changes to our FEMA?
No changes.
So, and that, but, again, that was the same thing, we would think, really, this really is...
Yeah, when you said that, I had to ask the question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sure. For our ongoing management activities, we know the La Capo Folly Inlet Crossing and the Bend Widener, that's been coming up, and David Christie probably have more up-to-date information with me. But we're still working on the Florence and Michael mitigation, and the Central Reach Reversment Project. They did collect the live records, and the sand looks pretty good. It's gotta be shipped off to the labs for grain size analysis, but it looks like we're gonna have enough sand for that. Dory mitigation, that's kind of just starting, and we did, you know, calculated some losses of that. And then, the, and I know this is maybe a few months, you know, a long time ago, actually, but that La Capo Folly... ago, actually, but that Lockwood Folly outer channel dredging that the county had proposed, that they're no longer proposing, which is good, which is something that we're a little concerned about, and that's about it, and we'll just kind of keep moving forward with that. With, so the on, with the annual, finishing up the annual monitoring report, the Dorian memo mitigation, and, and the offshore far area.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Ms. Ferguson, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir, I'm just on the agenda for about four more times, so I thought I'd...
Okay, keep going, I guess.
Okay, in regards to the long-term beach inlet management plan that the IBPB spoke to earlier, um, they have been working on that for quite a while, the facilitator for that was ATM. It was before you guys last month that you wanted a month to digest it, in case there were some things you wanted to bring up, and Fran is here for any questions that you may have, um, it is before you for consideration of adoption tonight.
I, uh, I don't have any questions about it, it's a very thorough document, I've had sufficient time to go, go through it, ob- obviously, and that, so, it's, uh, the pleasure of the, my fellow commissioners, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, we, we approve the, the document provided.
Second, discussion?
Um, yeah. This is a really good document, okay? As written, it has a really good historic perspective, it includes all of the different projects that, and proposed activities that are known today in a very sound way. Now, when we discussed the IBPB charge, July 24th in 2018, um, there were comments about an ultimate presentation of a plan with estimated costs between now and the next central reach that would help the Board of Commissioners put together a sort of a financial plan of where we needed to get. Now, obviously, because of Florence and Michael, and the anticipated FEMA state combined disaster fund contribution, central reach is now sort of 10 more years, but I think it would still be extremely useful to the board if there were a hypothetical project planned for five years, um, covering the Folly Inlet renourishment and the various dune stability projects with estimated costs year by year, so that we can see what this is. Um, and I just, I would just say it's hypothetical, but since we ourselves proposed that we should get sand on the east end every other year, just put two of them in, and then the other activities, um, you know, it would be really good if it were like a bar chart sort of plan, you could do it quarterly, um, if there had to be some milestones in there, but I think that, that if that were available in time for the next budget cycle, that would be a really easy way for whoever is on the board to take a look at, what do we have to be planning for? Um, and it's just sort of a, a worst-case scenario type thing, like I said, if we're gonna say, every other year, do a Lockwood Folly Inlet, sand on the east end, that's probably the worst-case cost. Now, regarding the report itself, and again, this is a really good report, but I really would like the BOC and the IBPB at your next meeting to just sit down in a joint meeting, go through it. There are a few things in here that I'd like clarified, I have a few things that I think would strengthen it. If people don't want to do this, I will actually go through them one by one, and we can discuss them and, um, either agree or nix it now, but I don't think that's the most efficient use of this time. Um, some of it is really not that much, other than some additional suggestions of clarifications. Um, a couple things are a little bit more, but most of it's just clarifications, and I don't, again, see that it's a big deal for the board to sit with the committee, with the, the IBPB, at your next meeting, and just go through it. It doesn't really delay anything much more than a month. Then, at the end, I do have one thing that I think does need to be made clear, when you get to page 3.2 on evaluating progress, it's the BOC's responsibility to evaluate the progress, determine whether the plan is being appropriately implemented. This board is to give recommendations and charges, but you actually give yourself the ultimate responsibility to evaluate progress or determine whether the plan is being appropriately im- implemented. I think that IBPB should indeed, um, propose modified timelines of existing agreed plans in the face of new regulations, um, for BOC consideration when it happens, but I think ultimately, the overall plan implementation project, progress, is the Board of Commissioners' responsibility.
I like what I saw, and I, again, this is another group that did a phenomenal job, good people put on a job, uh, good work with the town, came up really, really good results. I think the boards will always have a chance to modify these plans going forward, we can have meetings, we can have discussions, we can update, we can lay out proposals. I like what I saw now, and I would just like to say, let's formalize, formalize this one now, we accept this plan, and going forward, we'll be subject to, uh, adjustments as we learn new things, if we have new experiences, but for tonight, I would go along with the, uh, with, tonight, we, we solidify that we, we buy this plan as it is.
All right, then I will go through what I actually found that I thought would clarify or make it better, point by point. Page 1.3, table 1.2. I, I said if we weren't, I would, I would actually...
Yeah, but I, 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 I move we call the question, there's a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor, not a discussion of changing it.
There's a call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you understand what you're voting, you're voting on whether to call the question or not, you're not voting on the motion. So, you're voting on whether to call the question or not, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those opposed?
Okay.
Does everybody understand the way it works?
I have to admit, I'm puzzled right now.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor, you have a second on the floor. The motion maker has made the motion, call for a question, which means he's tired of hearing all this, he wants to vote on it. So now, you're voting on whether you're ready to vote on it, or whether you want to keep talking. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I understand that.
It is.
Okay? All right, so I'm gonna ask a question again. The motion is to vote on whether or not you're ready to vote, so if you're in favor of that, say aye.
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 Okay, and those opposed?
No.
So it's pretty standard, three, two. All right, so now, we're going to vote, which means the question of discussion is over with. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those say no. So I heard three.
That's five.
Five, all five of you?
No negatives.
No negatives.
So you're not a negative?
I am a negative.
What do we, are we accepting, are...
He, 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 he has a motion on the floor.
To approve.
To approve.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, right now, I'm hearing one negative and four pauses. Is that the way it is?
As I said, it's, with the understanding that this can be changed and altered as we see fit, um, it's...
Okay, can't, we're, we're trying to resolve the vote right now.
Yeah, John made that comment, so I think that's understood.
All right, so Madam Clerk?
I missed that, I'm sorry, was that unanimous, or was it?
No, ma'am, it's four to one.
Wait, Mike, okay, thank you.
Okay, it passed. All right, what, you, are you through? Thank you very much. All right, are we ready to go to number, where are we, 10?
It's got another one, doesn't it?
Are we on number 10?
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Ferguson?
Okay, Ms. Way contacted the staff regarding our sand search after the seismic data was collected. His recommendation was that when we were doing the Bible cores, that we needed additional Bible core sampling. Um, the additional Bible cores are recommended in order for the town to have two usable borrow areas, one with 21 Bible cores and the other with nine. Fewer than nine would be helpful for long-term research, but nine is the practical minimum for a usable borrow area, as it needs to be, excuse me, sufficiently linked for a hopper dredge, and it also gets us to our approximately 1 million cubic yards, which we need for the project, um, in order to complete that in a timely manner while they were out collecting. Um, we did have to commit $17,565 to that effort, um, so we would, that was sourced from the professional services line in the B part budget, and a budget amendment is attached that appropriates or reimburses funds that have been expensed in this effort.
At 17 dash 16, I mean, 19 dash 16, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. I move we approve the ordinance 19 da- dash 16.
Have a motion to a second.
Second.
Mr. Fletcher, second, and in discussion. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Are we, you still standing there smiling, keep going?
Okay, we were contacted by the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, uh, they asked that we do this in a timely manner, we have to do one of these resolutions each time there's a storm where, um, we are approved for funding, um, and review, and so, the applicant designee has to be assigned to the suggested motion for Dorian, is the BOC hereby designates Town Manager David Hewitt as the primary applicant agent, and Assistant Town Manager Ferguson as a secondary agent on the FEMA resolution, and you may want to add the number 1905.
Everybody, and all the commissioners understand what we need?
Yep.
I move the approval of resolution 1905, 19 dash 05.
Second. Motion made in second, and Mr. Fletcher, Joe, anybody want to discuss?
I'm okay, I'm good.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, unanimous. Are you done now?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank both of you. Chief Dixon?
So September has been fairly unadimplant since our last meeting, so I don't have a lot to talk about there, but I actually want to talk about is a few upcoming events in October. Um, October 17th, which is this Thursday, the Old Beach Police Department is actually hosting a DCI, uh, network training, so it's a state-run program, um, where officers can get online and do criminal issues, things like that. Anyway, it's, it's all administered by the state, that's the I, it's in an officer to Raleigh, they do regional training, and Old Beach has actually been host, so proud of officers for working that out and getting that into works. Um, October 19th, which is Saturday, there's a 5K color run, that is at 9:00 a.m., so if you're out and about, please watch for runners, pedestrians, traffic is gonna be moving very slow. With that said, there's also a funeral in the chapel, most of you have heard about Chaplain John Gray passing away, that will be at 11 o'clock, so some of the runners, the funeral, a lot of that will be overlapping. Police Department, Assistant Town Manager, we've been working to coordinate some of the traffic and logistics behind this, but please be very mindful, it's gonna be a big rush Saturday morning, if you have to get somewhere, please get there early, and try and get back, but I'm gonna slow down. This is through this Saturday. Next Saturday and Sunday is the 26th and 27th, is the Festival by the Sea, so again, that's gonna be another big event for us, please slow down, mind your manners, watch traffic, we'll be doing what we can. Um, with that said, the parade, there's a parade for this fall festival, it starts at 10 o'clock, we'll be shutting the bridge down around 9:30, so if you have to get off the island, please get off before 9:30. A lot of people are pulled there, 9:35 upset, we understand, but we're shutting it down for the parade. Um, we will get it back open as soon as we possibly can, but I can't tell you what time that'll be, depend on, if there's 15 people walking across the bridge, we'll get them back pretty quick. If there's 5,000, it's a little longer to get them back, so we will get traffic moving as quickly as we can. And then, October 28th through November the 3rd is the Governor's Highway Patrol, or the Governor's Highway Safety Halloween, who's a, who's a campaign, as you know, we try to take a more proactive approach, we've participated in the last few campaigns that they've done, so expect to see more officers not only on Old Beach, but within the county, the Highway Patrol, around 17, around the holidays. Those campaigns will continue to run through Thanksgiving and Christmas, but mind your manners, slow down a little bit, they'll do fine. Now, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I know we didn't talk about the numbers much, but there's really just not much to talk about in September.
Any questions, comments?
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, today, I read, uh, the report that the state now has some funds for traffic safety, and there can be grants made, is that something that would apply to us?
It, it's very possible, it's actually something we're looking into, with, with doing more of the Governor's Highway Safety stuff, uh, we're trying to see what kind of state funding that we can find out there.
Because I think with crossings and things like here on the island, to me, that's a, a critical safety issue.
I would love to tell you we can, I, I don't know for certain, it's, it's definitely something that we have looked into preemptively, not enough that I can give you any details.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any hunting allowed on the island?
There is, no, no, this, this is a good question, I'm, I'm actually glad it came up, because this is hunting season, and it always comes up. So, there is a town ordinance that regulates hunting on Old Beach, that says you can't do it, okay? That is a town ordinance. We have talked to wildlife, wildlife said it is not against state law to hunt on those islands that are back there. It's not against the state law, as long as they have a license, they're wearing orange and doing everything else that's legal within the state laws of hunting, it is a town ordinance that makes it illegal to hunt back there on the islands. So it is, it is illegal in the sense of a town ordinance, but not in the sense of wildlife coming over here to enforce it, which leaves it on us, unfortunately, is a very difficult thing, trying to figure out how to address it. It is a battle that I am trying to figure out and how you have to do.
But, but you can enforce it despite, the, the state rule doesn't overrule your ability to enforce our ordinance?
No, the, the ordinance makes it illegal, the ordinance makes, it's not a state law, but the ordinance makes it illegal. The problem is, as far as enforcing it, the, the practicality of it, where they're hunting is by boat, they bring boat over, it's, we don't have a boat to access them.
I got you.
And, I mean, there, there's just a lot of practical issues that make it difficult. If they're driving up the Northern Ocean Boulevard, it's a completely different story, but when you're coming in by waterway and boats, the practicalities of it are, are much, much different, and when we call the Wildlife Commission and ask them for assistance, they basically tell us...
You're right on.
It's, it's a town ordinance, it's not a state law.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's where we're at with it.
Because there were a couple of boys popping off some shotguns over the weekend in Marsh.
If, now, and there, there are...
Oh, yeah.
There are some different laws about how close they can be within houses, if some of that gets, but I know a lot of those islands are, are several hundreds yards back.
This was in the marsh. This was not the islands, this was in the marsh.
The marsh back there. If, if you, please call us, we want to know about it, because we'll go down there to check it out, if we can't get to them, we'll call Wildlife, if they tell us no, at least we have it documented that, that we've tried to address it, so please, don't, don't be discouraged on my calls.
But our marshland, it, that... But our marshland, it, the, the no firearm supplies there, right? Our ordinance supplies there.
My understanding of the ordinance is it covers the entire island.
The entire island.
Including, so halfway to the waterway is my understanding. The attorney may correct me on the, the boundaries, but halfway to the waterway is my understanding.
Within the boundaries of town of Old Beach, it would apply. Yes?
That would be my assumption.
Yes.
The town charter calls for the high tide, for the high tide mark being the boundary of the corporate limits of the town.
Let me see, well, I'm sorry, I'll move on back. Are we done with that section?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I have a question. Yes, sir.
Chief, can you communicate that to your, your people? They misunderstand what the ordinance is, and I'm calling it is confusing because of the, the variance that you just described. I called and one of your guys came out and stated that he didn't have the, the authority, the jurisdiction didn't allow him to do anything, so we misunderstood that. Which, not a big deal, but contrary to what Mike saw, I saw two times that with high-powered rifles.
Okay.
And that's a lot more serious than a shotgun going off. I'm not saying that, I don't know how to fire a rifle, but if they fire it this way and I take a round through the house, it doesn't matter if it's a matto or not.
Right, I agree a hundred percent.
So, if you, if, I didn't, I don't, and they came in with one of the guys I saw.
Right.
There was another group that came in with dogs that I think walked down whatever that access street is.
Oh, really? Those, those I would love to talk to.
Yeah, there's, there's two groups, there's two groups that happened, and one, the two guys with the high-powered rifles came in with one of them. And I'm sure that'd be hard to, to pin them down, but they're a lot more serious than the guys with shotguns.
Right, absolutely. Anytime you see a police, call us. Hey, thinking of, like I said, they're coming in by waterway. We just, we don't have the, the means to get them.
They just responded, they just missed on.
And they get, and I.
They had information.
Yeah, I would definitely, we're actually doing some of our insurance training right now, so we, we will have a discussion on that. Yes, ma'am. A drunk? No, ma'am, we've, we've honestly not looked into a drunk for that.
All right, thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hewitt, number thirteen.
I'll read resolution nineteen oh six, the resolution in honor of Veterans Day. For as individuals from all walks of life have taken arms and have sworn to support and defend the principles upon which our country was founded, and whereas throughout our history courageous men and women have dawned the uniform of armed forces and build a noble tradition of faithfully and dedicated service to our country. And whereas, the military men and women who serve and protect our country come from all walks of life, their parents, children, grandparents, friends, neighbors and coworkers, and are an important part of our communities, and whereas, Veterans Day has been set aside to honor those American patriots who answered the call of duty preserving our freedom and often made for the ultimate sacrifice, and whereas we can never fully repay our debt of gratitude to those heroic men and women who served, were wounded, or even died in battle, and whereas we continue to draw inspiration from the heroism and dedication of those who served and sacrificed for the cause of liberty and justice. And whereas, on November the eleventh, we are reminded of our solemn obligation to serve our veterans as well as they have served us. Now, therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the town of Old Beach, North Carolina, that all citizens join together to observe Veterans Day on November the eleventh and to honor the special men and women who have served our country.
Here, here. Thank you.
Is your motion passed or approved?
I move to approve resolution nineteen dash oh six.
Our second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
As a reminder, there is a Veterans Day luncheon, a Veterans Luncheon on the eighth of November, and you need to call and register. That's not just for veterans, but it's also for anyone that would come, would like to come and socialize, family, friends, et cetera. But you need to call by first of November and get registered.
Are you still up?
Yes, I want to sit down.
You're up, but you're down. All right, Mr. Hewitt, number fourteen.
Yes, sir, we had a MAPS study, Personnel Classification and Pay Plan study done over the last several months, beginning right at the end of the last fiscal year. That was briefed to the board previously last month. There are several items that need to be approved in order to implement the recommendations made by the MAPS group. The classification and pay plan and also the corresponding budget amendment need to be adopted. You should also, if you're so inclined, vote to implement the option one, which is the implementation strategy approved at the September seventeenth meeting effective the first of January twenty twenty. And the last item the board needs to consider is approval of the updated personnel policy. There's a corresponding budget amendment that goes along with the classification and pay plan. It's been developed in accordance with your direction and is for a total of fifty-one thousand dollars and provides the implementation funding for the new pay plan to be effective for the second half of the twenty nineteen, twenty fiscal year.
I'd like to first, first start by just saying, as you can remember, I was concerned that the town employees were receiving a competitive wage along with other competitive benefits, compensation benefits. In order to determine that, we hired the MAPS group, and as a result of the study, within every classification, there are no employees receiving a wage that is not competitive within their classification. After going back through the MAPS group recommendations, that not only include the pay plan recommendation, I agree with the fact that we need to revise the pay scale for the various classifications. However, I recommend that this initiative be done in line with the next budget cycle and not implement option number one effective January first, two thousand twenty. I also do not recommend an ordinance amendment to nineteen ten. There are other personnel policy considerations that also need to be reviewed and agreed upon, such as revising the vacation schedule. And additional discussions and resolve regarding employee healthcare contribution costs. I am not suggesting at all that we use the average percentage outlined in the healthcare benefits survey summary that were put together regarding various communities surrounding us, but to reach a decision that is fair to everyone and does not create a financial impact or hardship to our employees. I recommend a total compensation review and agreement before trying to provide a salary adjustment that has been part of the current budget. That is not part of the current budget.
I, 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 I agree with that. You know, during the discussions, during the MAPS presentation, I, I, I kind of said similar things that, again, yeah, to bring the pay to where it's competitive, not a problem. We saw, actually, I was surprised with the vacations. It, it is also not competitive, which we should, which should be addressed. But I agree that it should be within the framework of, of the new budget, which starts, you know, in a couple of months or the beginning of the year for the new budget, which would be adopted in, in the summer. And, and it should address this, it should address the comprehensive compensation, not just the pay plan. So, there's other, other, other components that make up the, you know, your compensation that also needs to be, to be addressed as, as Commissioner Butler said.
Anyone else?
Yeah. You guys wanted to have this study, and the concern was about competitive pay, being able to hire people and keep people. We went through this at the meeting, and there was the discussion about the benefits and that that could be addressed in the next budget cycle, but what was important was to get people properly classified in the job title with description that was appropriate, and to start paying them that salary, which also would mean if we had to hire people, we would be hiring people at what would be a more, I'll just term it acceptable market rate. So, I'm very surprised now to hear that you're proposing to push the entire thing back until the next budget cycle, because I personally don't think it's necessary. It is necessary in the next budget cycle to go through how we are going to handle the healthcare, but the pay, the pay scale actually was agreed four to one, as I recall, at the last meeting. So, another reversal by our guys. I don't know what is happening in terms of the concerns about the overall personnel policy. There were, I mean, I actually analyzed it. I put out some of the things that I thought were the topics that we could discuss. Nobody has wanted to discuss them. It dealt with longevity pay, tuition assistance program, the vacation leave with the accrual rate, vacation leave maximum accumulation, and then just a statement on access to confidential records. I think that you're the ones who wanted this. We're the board that made this happen. You're pushing it off to the next board, which I personally find extremely weak, that something that we've commissioned and is in front of us, now you're just saying, let's not touch it at all.
I don't think I'm saying that at all. What I'm think I'm saying, and maybe you misunderstood what I said, is that I am, I am definitely want to see, to make sure everybody is in the classification. The original goal and objective of this study was to make sure we didn't have anybody that was outside of the pay scale, and that if they were, then we would bring them into the pay scale. That was the original goal and objective. However, going through the document through its entirety, I can see that there's a lot of other things that are in there to include the vacation study, and Pat, yes, you did make recommendations on the vacation study, and we should, we're probably in a position to be able to identify that, because the vacation schedule needs to be updated. It's, it's old. I hate to use the word old, but it's, it's probably obsolete in today's times. And if you look at all the information pertaining to the, all the surrounding islands around us, we're at the bottom of the totem pole, rather than being up toward the top of the totem pole. And, and the healthcare issue is an issue, and the healthcare issue should be discussed. And I did make the statement that we, we should not penalize anybody, but I think it's our obligation to go forward with it and come up with the recommendations.
Okay. I, I would just, I would just say that Pat is one hundred percent correct when she says that we voted four to one just, just at a special meeting to accept option number one, and this was after a good deal of discussion. And we also discussed the fact that our goal wasn't merely to make these people not be outside the lowest range, it was to give them a fair salary. And if you look at page eight, nine, which is in our minutes from the last meeting, you'll see that. And, and it's not just a couple of months, despite what Commissioner Frey said, it's nine months, right? We just started the third quarter, so we're not pushing this off for a couple of months, we're pushing it off till July. That's, that's nine months away. The, the other thing I'd like to say is, I've sat here now for two years and we've commented and complimented the workers on the wonderful job they've done on a number of issues at a number of times. And when it comes time for us to pay them a fair wage, I know that, I know this isn't the opportune time to say it, because the election time is less than a month away, and it's always good to be tough and frugal. But the right thing to do is to give these people a raise on the option one, because we've recognized the fact that they're underpaid. There are people here who are forty percent below what the, what the, you know, the average or the median wage is. And for us to, to put that off for nine months, just, it's not right, and it's not fair.
I don't think it has to be put off nine months or something, but we are having an election in three weeks from today. This would drive the salaries up a hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't want to go away with that thing on my back. If the new board decides that that's the right thing they want to do, the ranges are fine, and we can always take an individual job and adjust it as we have done in the past. If somebody's out of line, we can move that. And a new board could even have it effective January the first if they chose. I'm more concerned about the status within the general fund that we have, the, the money that we have to pay the future bills. So, the fund ratio was an issue for me. This would draw it down fifty thousand for this, during this next year. So, while I would also appreciate it starting at the beginning of next year in the budget year, so not interfering with this budget year, my bigger issue is, is that I think the new board ought to be one that to make the decision.
And Mr. Fletcher, can I point out that the fifty-one thousand dollars is not totally sourced from the general fund, but it is spread across three funds. There's thirty-three thousand dollars from the general fund, seventy-eight hundred dollars from the water and sewer fund, and ten thousand dollars from the occupancy tax fund.
All right. I, I would just say, I may, I may be mistaken, but I thought I just heard someone say, I don't want to make a tough decision, I'll leave that to the next guy.
Yep.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I can't get over it. I'm sorry. We, we make, we make decisions here, and then when we get pushback, we reverse them. And we, and we want to push forward with things because it's, it's policies that you want passed. So, you want to vote on those tonight, but when there's a tough decision to be made that you may not be in favor of, you want to kick the can down the road. This is, this is what's so frustrating here. There's no consistency, there's no, I, I'm sorry, I, I. I've never been so frustrated in my life as I am tonight, to see the way, to see the way things are done. We talk about, we want to have open and transparent meetings, and how do we start the meeting? By asking to put something on the agenda that nobody in this room has any ideas of what it's about. We want people to come here so they can have open comment, and then you shut us down, so we can't even make comments on something. It's, this, this is just beyond, I, I'm sorry. I, I have nothing else to say, but this is, this is nauseating.
Everybody had the turn, Peter?
No, I haven't, but that, that's an actually mischaracterization with just, what is happening tonight, because my call, the question was to, we had a discussion through, everybody had their chance, and where was the, there was a.
Peter.
A, excuse me, there was a, the discussion was getting into, here's the, here's the corrections I'm gonna make to a document. That's, that's what happened tonight. So, the other part is that a meeting happened Friday afternoon, and, and it, it was deemed to be important enough to address immediately. Sorry, but that's, that's what happened.
Okay.
So, I don't have any problem with that, and I think, I, I think the, the, making tough decisions, I think the easy decision is just to, you know, allocate money for, for raises without doing it comprehensively.
Okay.
There's a, there's a lot of, a lot of components to this, and, 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 and it's fifty thousand dollars for six months. So, that, that's why I was the one vote. I don't disagree with, with making some changes, but there's other changes that were, were way, way over, way, way different than any other community that, that also need to, to be adjusted as well.
There's a lot for me to respond there to, but the most important. There's a lot for me to respond there to, but the most important issue is you used a parliamentary procedure to shut down open discussion. You can call it what you want. You can say what you want, but if you really wanted open and transparent meetings and discussion, then Pat could have asked her questions and we could have sat here and we could have, we could have addressed them and talked about them.
All right. What's the pleasure, your board, at this point?
I make a motion that we accept option one and implement the, the wage increases effective on January first.
Second.
Everybody understand the motion and the second discussion?
Without consideration for the other items that are contained within the recommendations by the MAPS group.
We're only talking...
That's what I'm looking for.
We're talking about classification and pay. There's...
I don't disagree. You could, you could change, you put people in the right classifications and if there's anybody that you're going to put in a classification that's not going to be paid the correct salary of that classification, then that's wrong. They would automatically receive that increase.
Any more comments?
Again, yeah, I'll make, I'll, I'll make another comment. Again, it shows, it shows the inconsistency here. We hire experts to do a report, to give us their recommendations, and then we decide that we don't want to follow those recommendations despite the fact that it was, the retaining of these experts was that the people were now refusing to give the raise. They wanted this done and you can only surmise why they wanted it done, but I guess it didn't come out the way they expected it. So now, instead of looking at it and accepting the recommendations, they're, they're going to kick it down, down the road. And so I guess we could, we could just vote on it, but we know how that's going to come out anyway, too.
Yeah, well, one, one thing I just want to say that, you know, I did state that, that I'm very much in favor of revising the pay scale for the various classifications. And if individuals are not within that pay scale, then they need to receive an increase.
And there was discussion that the point was not that we just pay our people the minimum, that we do the adjustment based upon their years of service as well, which is what option one does. So, you know, you're basically saying, just, just put people at the minimum of their pay, their new pay range and then don't do anything to...
I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying...
Actually, you're, you're pointing out, get them into their classification and their pay range. Well, that is putting them at the bottom irrespective of anything. That is not actually making it a competitive pay scale. You pay for what people do and you pay for what they do based on the market as well as their seniority in the position. That's how things are done when people are working well. And I am quite bewildered by this total reversal of less than a month ago.
You, you're focusing on one component of compensation and that is my argument that we should focus on the total, all the components of compensation. And we know from the report that there's one, that, that family healthcare is way overcompensated compared to our, our neighbors. And the other component is it's, this $50,000 is coming from somewhere and it's actually $100,000 annualized, so this, let's not kid everybody. So that's, that's, that's what we're saying. We're not arguing with, with the other, the other, the other components, but we're saying that it should be all, all treated together so, so you're not picking and choosing and, and, and it should be a total compensation discussion and decision.
And, and along with an increase, I, you know, I'm always accustomed to making sure that either supervisors, managers, and directors approve of that increase that's going to be going to the employee.
Okay. I, I would just say to both of my colleagues here, we had, we had a discussion. We were, we were here. I'm looking at the pages now and I, I think I'll just read a little. So we met on September 17th, less than a month ago. We kicked this all around. We decided that we were, we decided as a group and voted for the one that we were going to take option one, raise their salaries, and then when the new budget year comes in and when the new, we find out what the price of the healthcare, we would address that issue. That's what we decided on. So we, we discussed this all. And, and let me just say, there's a part on page 10, anybody can look at it, where Commissioner Butler said his original objective was to make sure the employees are at least paid in the scale they deserve. His opinion is the board should pursue that. He would recommend at least consider giving Town Manager Hugh a direction on the salary today. Commissioner Sullivan said his motion was to adopt option one. He doesn't think the goal is just to pay the minimum, it is to pay a fair salary. To him, when he listens to what was presented to the board and when he looks at the document in front of the board, the fair salary is option one. Commissioner Kwiatowski said everyone agrees loyalty longevity is valuable. She thinks one of the things option one does is highlight that the town is rewarding people for staying in the organization and working their way up as much as they can. It's valuable for people to know what the long-term service is. Commissioner Butler stated he is not happy with the minimum either. His concern was the folks who may not even be there. Let them get there. So last month, we voted four to one. Last month, we weren't happy with the minimum. This month, we don't want to give the raise and we're happy with the minimum. It's just another reversal.
I, I think this reversal, which has happened more than once, maybe is a really good reason why we should have two meetings on any, any major item. You do the reading, but you don't actually implement it till everybody in the town has had a chance to read it, understand it, appreciate it, give feedback, and then only after the second reading will we take the vote that would finally implement a program.
Well, I have to say, we actually had this for three weeks before we had this special meeting. Then it was discussed at the last Board of Commissioners meeting and now it's being discussed at this Board of Commissioners meeting. We have had this document for a couple of months and it has been a public document that people can see, so...
So during our special meeting, nobody learned anything? So now, so now that they present themselves as, as a, as a changing their opinion?
No, I, again, I, well, perhaps you didn't learn anything at the special meeting?
I, I was the one that, that is consistent. So I think, you know, during the discussion, we're supposed to take into account others, other, other people's opinion and, and a presentation of facts. So I don't, I don't understand why it's a, a negative to, after deliberation from a, a meeting to, to, to change your, change your position, which I haven't, by the way, but...
Any more discussion? I believe we have a motion and a second, haven't we?
We do.
Any ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Probably say no?
No.
Three to two. Any other motions to follow? Any other motions to follow? Having none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Number 15. Mr. Sullivan?
Ah, Jesus. This, we would have moved for this to be removed from the agenda except that our attorneys are here. We, we have, I'll read, I'll read this for the second time, just for your benefit. We have a condition where people were parking in other residents' right of ways overnight. You passed an ordinance that you couldn't park your car on the island in the, in the public parking between two and five o'clock in the morning. And the police department began to increase their enforcement, so residents were getting tickets for parking their vehicles in their own right of way at night. So in an effort to fix that, we drafted a little, a little something here. Let me find it. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was next one up here. So it's, it's, after due discussion and consideration, in April 2018, the Board of Commissioners voted to revise ordinance section 7202 Parking Regulated on Public Streets and Rights of Way. The revised ordinance contains section K. It shall be a violation of this chapter to leave standing any portion of a vehicle in a lawful parking area between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. The stated purpose for the revision was a concern for the safety, privacy, and property rights of the property owners of Holden Beach due to an increase in proactive enforcement measures of the Holden Beach Police Department related to parking in the right of way. The benefit of the revision has been questioned by some residents and visitors. In an attempt to address the stated concerns and also protect the stated purposes of the revised ordinance, I suggest the following course of action. One, suggest to rental agencies that the number of available legal spaces be included in all advertisements for rental properties. This will give potential renters an opportunity to determine if a rental home has sufficient parking for their needs. Number two, allow Holden Beach property owners displaying a valid Holden Beach vehicle decal to work in the, I'm sorry, to park in the right of way of adjacent to their property as long as such parking is not otherwise prohibited, i.e. no parking on O B W or within 25 feet of an intersection. This limited exception coupled with other ordinance provisions should address the vast majority of complaints without expanding the potential for overcrowding and the conversion of smaller rental properties. And we voted last meeting to have that done and then Town Attorney was going to draft language because there's some specificity needed to make sure that you can allow residents to have parking privileges that visitors don't have. So we shifted attorneys. We didn't get the language. It was in the agenda and so we'll ask you to look at that and prepare language that will make it, I'm sorry, thank you, which will allow us to amend our parking by including that, that provision.
So Commissioner Sullivan, I know this topic as of today, reading the agenda packet and having a brief conversation with Ms. Fox. I'm well up to speed on public street law, private street law, on the street, off the street. I'm not prepared to give you, or the board, any sort of suggested language or revisions. By November, I will. Ms. Fox and I are probably going to have a meeting where we talk about this and her concerns. I'm, you know, kind of growing up in the Wilmington and Rice Beach area. They've got a ton of public parking crowded issues. They have meter parking there. The owners have parking decals that allow them to park within meter spaces without being charged. So I'd like to hear Ms. Fox's perception of the issue and see if we can cobble together something that's not only lawful, but enforceable and practical. You can pass a resolution of law all day long, but if you don't enforce it, if you can't enforce it, it really is a waste of time and resources. But I'm happy to look into it and Jennifer and I will be ready to go by November's meeting with suggested language. I'm not sure how far in advance we can get the board, our suggested language. That will depend on a variety of factors, including Ms. Fox, all of each one of you separately in advance to try and understand not only this issue, but what I see as another issue coming up in the next agenda item about maximum house sizes. So I'm going to have the same spiel with the maximum house size. If y'all just want to go ahead and...
Yeah, that, that...
...on that, I'll tell you, I'm in no position either to comment on that. I will be in a position, I believe, by the next November meeting.
Yeah, that meets my expectation.
That's, that's fine.
So, yeah. Yep. Yeah, I think that's the action that we're looking for.
Yes, we were going to take it off the agenda, but figured we'd leave it there just so we could have this little discussion.
Okay.
Okay, is it the consensus of the board that number 15 and 16 be removed from further discussion this evening and put it on the agenda for November?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Agree.
That's the consensus, board. Madam Clerk, may the minutes reflect that and we will move to number 17. Ms. Finn?
We did not have anybody submit any new applications for the Board of Adjustments. We interviewed today, but we had two people who offered to serve if nobody else did. Mary Lou was a previous member and she offered if nobody else applied. And then Phil Caldwell, he previously interviewed for the board for another position, so he offers to serve on the Board of Adjustment also. So there's ballots if you want to vote by ballot or if you are both fine with, or you're fine with both the choices, we could just go ahead and move forward with that.
I make a motion if we go with...
Move forward.
Yeah.
Is it the consensus of the board to accept those two names?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
May the minutes reflect that. Madam Clerk? Town Managers' report, Mr. Here?
Yes, sir. Jumping right back into the fire and talking about audits, we've received the annual draft, annual audit draft last Thursday and I am reviewing that with the intent to facilitate RISE, our external auditors' submission to the Local Government Commission by the end of October. On the internal control, I acknowledge the fact that I owe the board an outline to address elements in the report and I'm aiming for a rough draft Gantt chart by the end of the, by the end of the month to, also to the board. I have attached the latest list, the unit assistance list from the Financial Management Section of the State Treasurer's Office that is based on the 30th of June 2018 audited financial data and reflects the status of entities that are, have issues with the Local Government Commission as of September 18. For your information, those categories are, you either have your audit late or you have issues that rise to the level of being concerns by the Local Government Commission, State Treasurer's Office with internal controls, fund balance issues in the general fund or fund balance issues in your enterprise fund and water and sewer. So there's four categories. The Town of Holden Beach is not listed in any of those four pages of list. Finance staff, Mandy Lochner has resigned effective. Her resignation was effective last week, so I'm down one in the finance office. Moving on to the beach and inlet issues, our Lockwood Falls Ben Widener Navigation Project, Maintenance Project. I mean, you know that we've been working toward a harvesting of sand and the beneficial placement of material from that project, from the Corps' efforts for some time now to include easements on the east end, that, the latest that we have. And we have no other status more current than what I provided to the board last week. But for the benefit of the public, that apparent low bidder has been cleared by the Small Business Administration's despite their past performance issues, termination in other districts' projects, and the Wilmington District's concerns. The Corps of Engineers and Wilmington Office is working towards making an award the week of the 25th of October. That will include the Ben Widener option. That's where all the sand is. And we're unsure of what this, this lateness or the award of the contract's impact on dredging environmental, environmental windows to include an actual project delivery date. We're in contact with the program manager frequently and we'll stay tuned to that as the project approaches award on the 25th of October. I know Franz... I know Franz touched on the Century Each Project sand search. At the risk of being repetitive, our hydro and core boring work is done. Sent the lab for compatibility. Then the piece that he didn't mention is that we've got to do an archaeological multi-beam survey next. And all of those elements, we've got to get that data back before we can submit our permit for modification, which will occur shortly after the turn of the New Year. FEMA. FEMA's a five-letter word, no, I mean a four-letter word. With the federal declaration made for Dorian in Brunswick County here recently, that Holden Beach project is scaled, scoped by the preliminary damage assessment at about $4.6 million for the sand or the beach damages, CATG, plus some other cats and dogs. That currently brings our total that we're working here at Holden Beach up to five federally declared disasters simultaneously for beach nourishment issues. There's the two mop-ups that we have left from Matthew and Irene with about $300,000 left on the table. Florence and Michael, it appears that those project worksheets are shaken loose from the environmental queue. But some of the things that are coming into play now is that we've received our fixed cost offer, cost offers for the two of those together, approximately $25 million, which we will not be accepting due to the volatilities of the dredging contracting market. And we'll proceed with the regular obligation method. That is, we will go through a full-blown contracting effort so that we'll make sure that the market competes because it could come in at $50 million, and we're not going to accept the fixed cost. There's no, there's no advantage to timeframe regardless of which way you go. It's just that the vagaries of the dredge market are such that that's a high-risk operation, and if you, if you shoot low, you're going to be penalized by not being able to fully do a nourishment. We will meet with the FEMA program manager, which, oh, by the way, is the third one in the last year tomorrow regarding Dorian. And these five projects working simultaneously means that we're working multiple differing timelines because each one of these projects is separate now. They're not collective. While we may be able to achieve an economy of scale, whenever we get them all together, they still are individually worked. So, there's multiple timelines, multiple cross-functional relationships, and communications that have to be coordinated. Because sometimes we have different beach technical advisors too that, that come into play there. Suffice it to say that the project dynamics are curling daily now and will most likely assuredly continue into the foreseeable future with a number of federal, state, and local officials, Congress, dredging industry representatives, engineering, legal, banking, and contracting interests in order to successfully program and wrap up our previous projects and execute beach repair projects now, which now approach a total of $30 million when you add Dorian on top of it. All this is being done through a new digital FEMA grants portal, which is still being beta-tested. And unfortunately, because of our, the Holden Beach experience, we're now basically the guinea pig for the federal government's new system because of our experience with the way that these Category G reimbursements work. Woo, FEMA's a lot of fun. Moving on to public works, infrastructure, the Ocean Boulevard Crossworks. I think I heard some murmings, murmurings of that where we have, what we have found out recently is that can't have them where you have the speed limit greater than 35 miles an hour unless it's, you have signalization or the approval of the district engineer. We're still endeavoring to get up close for some possible consideration on exactly what that means in terms of approval by the district engineer. The Holden Beach Bridge repairs, not going to be done when we thought that we were going to be done. So, the clothespins will remain on the side of the bridge until at least March of 2020. And lo and behold, that the reason why it's not going to be done is the Town of Holden Beach's fault because y'all chose to, to put a decorative rail that had not been proposed by the Department of Transportation. I, I, please forgive, please forgive, please forgive my facetiousness, but that's the direct quote that came back from Mr. Evans' visit with the, the project engineer.
What?
They had already, they had already awarded the bid and the contract when they came here, and then when we told them that we didn't like the one that they had awarded, then the contractor chose not to, to do anything with the rails until they had completed the work that they had all agreed on under contract.
They came in...
Then they came back and said, now we got to do the engineering for the new rails, and we're going to have to renegotiate the contract. They're in the process of that. They're in the process of that. And he's optimistic that it'll be sometime, not before March 20th, but sometime around there or later. So, the state will have a lot of extra rope after March 20th, I guess, and they take the clothespins down.
But, but they're the ones that came and said, you picked this one, and we've got a different one.
I had that conversation with them.
Exactly, exactly.
But they, what they did was they offered up a choice after they had already awarded the contract.
Well, they didn't say that at the time.
I'm just, hey.
I know, I know. I'm with you. I'm with you.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just reporting the news that is the news here.
The decorative rail that we chose.
That they presented as an option.
They haven't even, they've not even done the, they've got to get the engineering done, and we know that work, and then goes back to their supplemental, and they have to prove what they chose is being right. And then it's quite a process if you, you know, if you're working government.
If they come and ask us if we approve...
If you remember, I didn't want the rail. I wanted the $1 million to pave Ocean Boulevard.
Yeah, we didn't have that choice. I didn't think...
But, okay. On, on the, a lot of better, some better news. Brunswick Avenue West paving status. We're go, as we often do whenever we are implementing our paving program, we try to get that paving done before Memorial Day, and we're on a glide slope to have the preliminary evaluation completed by the first, the first part of December, designs by the 30th of January with a bid documents and advertisement by mid-February. And hopefully, we can get good bids in by the, the first weekend, March. Plan on having that at the regular board meeting in March with award two weeks later so that we can lay asphalt down. The idea is to hit after Easter and, and get it done before Memorial Day. But that's the, the tentative schedule at this point. Another schedule is the Lift Station 3 outfit. We had a technical working session with Mr. Evans, Mr. Clemmons, myself, and Green Engineering, several representatives from Green Engineering last week. Looks like the plans and specs will be done mid-November. Advertising last week of November, right before Thanksgiving, with bids coming in shortly before Christmas with a tentative award, contract award date of January the 21st of 2020. And the, all of those dates are straight from, update from Leo. The last one is mine interpretation of conversation with him. It should be a late fall 2020 completion. Now, y'all are familiar with how the rollout and, and standing up of that last one. We had it. It, it started up, but it took some time to get that thing fine-tuned. So, there's some, there is some, some qualification to exactly what that means. And we'll, we'll keep that, we'll keep this schedule dialed in and bringing it back for the Board's consumption as it progresses. Upcoming, upcoming town-sponsored events. I think we've hit on the, the activities that are occurring this coming Saturday as well as the Festival by the Sea and also the Veterans Luncheon.
Any questions, Officer Town Manager? Okay, hearing the Mayor's comments tonight...
Can I have one more, one more piece? We, we are, the staff is going to meet with the, the new attorneys later on this week to assist with onboarding and current events issues. So, hopefully, that'll be beneficial for all parties.
Okay, anything else? Mayor's comments. Today's October the 15th. Hurricane Hazel, 1954 was this day. And those of you that are familiar with my comments about this date is that it's my feeling that if you can look into the ocean in the hurricane breeding grounds, and there's not one in sight on October the 15th,
You could.
that we've made it through the season. So, I am happy and hopeful that we have made it through the season and feel real good about it. Second item to address is a meeting we scheduled tonight for 6:45. I was told this morning that that meeting had been canceled because we didn't have anyone to interview. And I called Clerk. I don't know what time was it, Madam Clerk. 6:15, 6:20, something like that tonight. Said I would be here on time for the 7 o'clock meeting. And since the meeting was canceled at, for the 6:45 meeting, I would not be here at 6:45. However, I was next door, and nobody called me. And I understand there was a meeting at 6:45. So, I'm going to implore some kind of plan that your mayor be made at, at least have a phone call and say, are you dead? Or, because, you know, I had just got through talking to the clerk. So, it upsets me because I take a lot of pride in my attendance. I'm always here, and I was next door. No harm done, no foul, other than making me mad as a way of sitting in here, trying to do my job, trying to communicate. I'm going to find that for some reason I was left out of the loop. And you notice I didn't use any names. I'm trying to be polite. The most upsetting thing that I have to address tonight is a letter that I received. And of course, it's not signed, but it is serious. And I'm going to read this. It's to Mayor Holden. "After reading Lou's views regarding the selection of an external audit firm, I am writing as a concerned citizen. If you conduct an internet search for Rives and Associates LLC lawsuits, here are a few examples of what is or was revealed. Their firm was found guilty of fraud by PCTEL, sued by former partners, and scheduled to go to trial on December, in December of 2019 for dishonest business practices. An external audit conducted by Rives and Associates would not be reviewed with credibility due to the number of lawsuits and dishonest business practices listed. According to Lou's views, the vote was," and then parentheses are italics, "a decision was made, approval 3 to 2." Commissioner Petten and Commissioner Mycam both voted against retaining Rives as an auditor. I am certain the commissioners that approved retaining Rives and Associates LLC as the external audit firm are apparently unaware. Please share the information with the commissioners and reconsider. Thank you very much." And attached is a partial list of the lawsuits and the findings in regards to the conduct of this company. I have no idea who mailed this to me, but it does appear to be authentic information. And I'm going to ask Madam Clerk that you put this in the minutes and give, give a copy to all those commissioners, all five commissioners. I don't know what that means, but as the mayor of the Town of Holden Beach, it was sent to me to give to you guys, and I'm doing that. So, if, if I didn't do that, and it later came out that I was made aware and something went afoul, I would be blamed for not making you aware of it. So, I'm making you aware of that claim. The festival we've talked about coming up last weekend of this month, as it always does. Hope everybody will come. And lastly, John Graves' funeral, as mentioned earlier, will be 11 o'clock Saturday at the Holden Beach Chapel, and there will be a meal served for all the friends that are attending. And with that, Mr. Fletcher, I pass the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I think, you know, I'm always thanking people for coming to the meetings, but I would like to recognize the staff and the volunteers that serve on committees, not just the ones that showed off their, their goodness tonight, but the Boards, I'm sure this Board, previous Boards, next Board will very much appreciate all the work that gets done. It's fantastic. Guys put a lot of work into it. And just know that it is appreciated, and especially those ones tonight have put years' worth of work into both the reports that we saw tonight, and we thank you for that.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just, just two things. To go, to go back to the two items that we discussed this evening having to do with recommendations from Boards. I hope nobody is under the misconception that I don't appreciate or respect what those Boards did and continue to do because that's not true. I respect them, and I appreciate it. What I don't respect is the methodology that we're using here to either accept or not accept the findings. I, I think that, I'll just make it clear. I think we should have a chance to discuss it, not just have to accept something because it's put in front of us. It's as simple as that. It has no different, it doesn't matter what the content is or who the Board is comprised of. It's just that we shouldn't just abdicate our authority or our duty to just accept anything that's placed before us. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Second is, since we talked about the Lift Station Number 3 a couple of moments ago, I want to mention again because I, I don't think it was done adequately. First, I want to commend Commissioner Kwiatkowski because it was her foresight and strategic thinking that had us consider whether or not to buy the property at 796 O B W to eliminate any potential problems we would have with sound, and it would lower the cost of the actual building of, of Lift Station 3. And then we all, we all met, and we approved that. And while we were in the process of doing that, the mayor volunteered his time and expertise and conducted the sale as our agent without taking any fee. So, those two people, those two activities deserve our acknowledgement and thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Petten?
Yes. I'd also like to say, as Mike did. When I say that reports are good and they're 90% of the way there, I'm looking at it from my background where I spent 25 years writing, finalizing, editing reports. And 90% of the way there, to me, is like exceptional. It's like I have minor things. And now, I'm not going to speak as a commissioner, but as a resident of Holden Beach and as a member of the public. I am denied the chance to actually input and make comment because of the way that we are operating, and I hope in future we can resolve this because it's frustrating to me, yes. But you're losing a lot of experience by shutting me out. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Staff, thank you for doing your usual great job. I hope we can get somewhere next year.
Mr. Butler?
I'd like to also thank the staff and all of the committee volunteers that we have. You guys do a wonderful job. Fantastic. Thank everyone for attending this evening, and I'd really like to, as a, as a... Thank everyone for attending this evening, and I'd really like to, as a, as a, as a veteran, I'd like to thank David for bringing the resolution up. David, thank you. This means a lot to me, it means a lot to all the veterans in our country today, and the sacrifice that the veterans have made. And, and also on Saturday morning, watch out for your joggers and runners and walkers Saturday morning. Thank you for attending.
Mr. Freer.
Yeah, I'd also add, add my thanks to the staff and the volunteers and all the hard work they've done, thanks.
All right, we're on number 21, public comments on anything that you want to talk about. Baseball games, football problems, basketball problems.
I would like to say something else. Can I just say it from here?
Let me, speaking of microphone, so we can record you.
I've just been along that. Um, I would just like to say that-
Name? Have to read your name, you can play.
Ron Dixon. And when I spoke earlier about the Inlet and Beach Protection Board, I inadvertently forgot to say two things. One was that the town staff was really, it made it sound like it was just the board members and Fran and Kathy, but really David and Christie have just worked tirelessly, tirelessly with us on this plan as well, so thank you. And it was always the intention, and is the intention of the board, for this document to be fluid and dynamic, and that we, as events occur, as new information becomes available, we will make modifications, so it's not cast in concrete. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to anything on your mind? All right, seeing and hearing no one is there, I'm asking my attorney, is there a second? I want to favor say hi. Return, thank you all for being here, and welcome aboard.